And if you don't mind holding for a moment, we're just waiting for the presentation slides to appear on the screen. This is an overview of the items that the presentation will cover. Tonight, we'll address the purpose of the meeting. We'll walk through the history of the project. We'll detail the project setting, the brief description of the operation of V-Town Farms. We'll address each of the amendments that are requested of the conditions of approval. We'll address transparency requirements, as well as public notifications and written communications received, and we'll conclude with a recommendation to the commission. Next slide, please.
Mr. Atkinson?
Yes.
I'm on mute.
Sorry, Commissioner, could you hear him at all? No.
I could not.
We couldn't hear him like 20 seconds ago.
I know, I just turned it on.
We still can't hear him.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that. We're going to run this back from the previous slide. For the record, this is Jonathan Atkinson, Senior Planner with the City of Vallejo, to now be presenting a request from the owners of V-Town Farms for an amendment of the major use permit. Tonight's meeting will cover a collection of items, the purpose of the meeting, project history, project setting, a brief description of the current operation of V-Town Farms, will detail the request for amendment to the conditions of approval, will highlight the transparency requirement, as well as note the public notifications that were provided for the project, as well as written communications that were received, and we'll conclude with a recommendation. Next slide, please. The purpose of the meeting is to conduct a public hearing at the request of Charles Wesley of Collaboration Vallejo LLC, and then make a decision on the proposed amendments to the major use permit. Next slide, please. The following is a brief chronology of events that have preceded tonight's meeting. On March 15th, 2021, the Planning Commission approved the major use permit for V-Town Farms by a five-to-one vote. On March 25th, 2021, the Planning Division received an appeal requesting that the City Council overturn the Planning Commission's decision. Going forward to May 25th, 2021, the City Council held a public hearing in consideration of this appeal. The City Council directed city staff by a 6-0 vote to return on June 7th, 2021, with revised conditions of approval. Addressing issues and concerns that were raised during the public hearing, it should be noted that Councilmember Hakeem Brown was recused from this particular item due to a conflict of interest. On July 2nd, 2021, the city's newly adopted zoning code went into effect, which includes cannabis-specific regulations. And sorry, I wanted to note that was January, or sorry, July 22nd. On July 2nd, the Building Division issued a permit authorizing V-Town Farms to make a series of tenant improvements to convert the building space into a cannabis business. On the 30th of July, 2021, the city issued a temporary certificate of occupancy, which allowed the operator of V-Town Farms to commence business operations while a collection of items were still being addressed, some of which were building code items, others were related to window improvements and transparency requirements, which we'll address in this presentation. The same day that that temporary certificate of occupancy was issued, V-Town Farms commenced business operations. Next slide, please. On October 25th, 2021, the applicant sent an email to city staff indicating that he wished to amend the major use permit, specifically as it related to required storefront transparency improvements and charitable donations. On the 29th of October, 2021, the temporary certificate of occupancy that was issued expired. On the 23rd of November, the applicant filed an application requesting a formal amendment of the conditions of approval for the major use permit. February 9th of this year, the Planning Division provided public hearing notices in the Times Herald newspaper to all property owners and neighborhood groups within a 500-foot radius of the project site, as well as posted a public hearing notice on the project site. All of these events have led to the major use permit amendment request that is before you tonight. Next slide, please. The project site is one of three parcels that comprise Meadows Plaza, which is a commercial shopping center located on approximately 17 acres of land in North Vallejo. The following existing developments and land uses surround this particular site. Undeveloped land is located to the north. Broadway Street is located to the east with a railroad and single-family residences on the other side of the street. Two vacant buildings that are part of Meadows Plaza are located to the south, and Sonoma Boulevard, also known as Highway 29, is located to the west. This particular parcel, which is highlighted by the star, is 4.29 acres. It's characterized by one large commercial building with multiple tenant spaces, a surface parking lot, mature landscaping. Meadows Plaza used to be home to Walmart, which closed in 2007, and Food for Less, which closed in 2016. This particular center had largely been vacant until July of 2021, when V-Town Farms commenced business. Next slide, please. The following images depict the existing building at the project site. The image on your left-hand side is V-Town Farms occupying a portion of the tenant space, and on your right-hand side are a collection of tenant spaces at 5184 Sonoma Boulevard. Next slide, please. V-Town Farms is a retail cannabis business, occupies 19,035 square foot portion of the existing approximate 49,000 square foot building space. Cannabis retail sales occupy 7,965 square feet, whereas retail cannabis storage occupies 4,455 square feet of the floor area. Cannabis manufacturing occupies just less than 500 square feet of the floor area and does involve non-volatile processes to manufacture infused pre-rolls, cannabis beverages, and flour. The cannabis distribution operation occupies just less of 1,500 square feet of the floor area, and this involves packaging and shipment of cannabis products, including those which are manufactured on the premises. There's a customer check-in area at the front of the building space that occupies 810 square feet. The employee break area comprises a little over 3,000 square feet, while offices and restrooms comprise 810 square feet. The remaining portion of the building space is approximately 30,000 square feet. It is not part of the cannabis business operation, nor is it internally connected to permit pedestrian access. And just wanted to state into the record that staff has inspected the space since V-Town has commenced business operations, and there's no activities in this unused portion of the building. Cannabis cultivation is not part of the operation, nor is it permitted at this particular location. V-Town Farms, as well as all other retail cannabis businesses, are permitted to operate from as early as 6:00 a.m. to as late as 10:00 p.m. at night. This particular parcel has 258 parking spaces. Next slide, please. The existing layout of the project site is depicted in this slide. You'll note that the building is set back pretty far from Highway 29 or Sonoma Boulevard and does have a large collection of surface parking to the west. Next slide, please. This slide details the existing floor plan for the business. The portion of the building that is occupied by V-Town Farms is situated at the northeast of this particular slide. You'll note that there is a door depicted on this original floor plan that has, you know, not been open to allow any access, as previously discussed. Next slide, please. The applicant is, as previously mentioned, is requesting two amendments to be amended. The first one is an amendment of Condition 14, and those conditions of approval were part of the packet. The existing condition reads as follows. As offered by the applicant, applicant shall donate a minimum of $600,000 annually to local nonprofit agencies or schools of his choosing for the benefit of Vallejo residents, primarily those residing in District 2. Said donation shall be adjusted annually for inflation in accordance with the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, CPIU, San Francisco, Oakland, Hayward, California. And just wanted to note for the record that District 2 is the City Council district, which is the area largely north of Highway 37 and west of Interstate 80. The proposed condition is as follows. The applicant shall donate a minimum of 1% of revenue annually to local nonprofit agencies and schools of his choosing for the benefit of Vallejo residents, primarily those residing in District 2. It should be noted that the applicant is proposing revenue to be defined as the total collections less city and state sales and excise taxes. The applicant has cited a collection of reasons for this particular amendment. They are as follows. The applicant spent $65,000 in litigation defending the city. The cannabis market has changed since V-Town Farms agreed to pay $600,000 annually, and sales revenue does not financially justify a charitable donation of this amount. The applicant also goes on to note that no other cannabis operators in Vallejo are required to make charitable donations, putting V-Town Farms at a disadvantage. And lastly, the applicant notes that 1% of sales revenue as a charitable donation is V-Town Farms' practice in Rio Vista and Antioch. Staff does note that every applicant for a discretionary permit is required to indemnify the city in the event that, you know, a lawsuit or a legal challenge is filed resulting from that particular decision. So there was a legal challenge against this particular project, but it's, you know, no different than any other applicant for a discretionary permit who agrees to indemnify the city and, you know, bear that cost in defense of that decision. In general, it is not unfathomable for a business to generate less revenue than anticipated. There are no other businesses in Vallejo, particularly cannabis businesses, that are subject to this condition. However, it should be noted that the business owner was agreeable to this particular amount of charitable donation, and that was taken into consideration when the City Council chose to approve this particular use permit request. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, if you can go back one. The applicant is also requesting the amount of, or sorry, the amendment of Condition 40B. This condition reads as follows. Storefronts shall maintain transparent windows that allow visibility into the store with a minimum of 60% transparency on the street frontage at the ground level and allow visibility into the building at a minimum of four feet above the ground. The proposed condition is as follows. As long as the applicant maintains at least two armed security guards on the premises 24 hours a day and seven days per week, the applicant shall not be required to meet the 60% transparency requirement, whether or not the requirement is reinstated in the code. The same with the previous amendment request. The applicant also cites several reasons to justify this amendment. They are as follows. In summary, requiring V-Town Farms to make additional storefront improvements to achieve 60% transparency creates security risks. There's no aesthetic value to achieving 60% transparency at V-Town Farms. The cost to make additional storefront improvements for 60% window transparency would result in employee furloughs. The 60% transparency requirement for retail cannabis businesses is no longer in the zoning code, and existing transparency requirements do not apply to the existing building space. It should be noted that both the Planning Commission and the City Council in approving the application did note, and there was a condition, that this facade would be altered to have 60% transparency. That was what the Planning Commission and the Council approved. The storefront transparency requirement is not simply a requirement for safety, but it is also an aesthetic requirement, does have aesthetic value. It can enhance the existing building. In this particular case, the building is largely concrete masonry. Additional windows would serve to visually and architecturally enhance the building elevation. This was not only a condition of the major use permit, but it was a zoning code requirement for retail cannabis sales, and this was in effect when the project was approved, and the project was subject to that particular requirement. It should be noted for the record that when the city adopted the new zoning code, there was a cut-and-paste error that resulted in this requirement and others not being included in the zoning code for retail cannabis sales. Staff will be bringing this correction, as well as other minor edits, to the Planning Commission in the next few months. Next slide, please. So this particular exhibit details exactly where the transparency required improvements would need to be made. It should be noted that it's the area that is highlighted in yellow. That is the storefront for V-Town Farms, so it doesn't include areas, you know, on either side of this mansard that pops out, or even in line with the V-Town Farms sign. It's simply the area that's just outlined within the yellow. 60% of that area would need to be either storefront windows, doors that allow visibility into the site. Next slide, please. The Planning Division provided public notice, as previously noted. That was a notice that was published in the Times Herald newspaper. All property owners within 500 feet and neighborhood groups as well received a notice. The applicant and the Planning Commission received a notice. And lastly, the notice was published, posted onsite on February 9th. The city has received written communications. We received two written communications, one of which involved a collection of questions on this particular amendment and whether or not the operation is in compliance with its original use permit. The other comment that we received or communication was from an attorney representing the applicant, as well as supporting the proposed amendments. Those communications have been provided to the Planning Commission, as well as posted on the city's website. Next slide, please. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to deny the request to amend the major use permit, because we believe that a modification is not in keeping with the City Council's action. A denial of this request would mean that the business would continue to be subject to the original conditions of approval that were imposed by the City Council. These include $600,000 in annual charitable donations in City Council District 2, and the required 60% transparency requirements as conditioned by the council. Should for any reason the Planning Commission wish to approve the applicant's request to amend Major Use Permit 20-0008, staff does request that the Planning Commission detail its reasons for approving these amendments. That would allow us to assist in the drafting of findings for approval, for which staff would return with a resolution and revised conditions of approval. Next slide, please. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. Charles Wesley, the applicant, and members of his team are in attendance via Zoom to answer questions and provide remarks on the request.
At this point, I see Mr. Wesley's hand, so is the technical department set up that he can answer any questions or at this particular time?
Madam Chair, if I may, I would recommend that we open the public hearing before we hear from the applicant.
Very good. All right. At this time, we will open this matter up for a public hearing. If the public hearing is for 10, 15 minutes and three minutes per person that would like to speak. So the public hearing is now open in this matter. So are there any?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Apologies, Vice Chair, go ahead.
No, please, go ahead. Thank you.
Chair Thompson, I do know that the applicant has a presentation. Perhaps if the commission so wishes, he could be allowed promoted to panelist so that he and his team could present, and that way the remainder of the audience can raise their hands if they want to speak on this matter after the applicant's presentation.
If that is the recommendation, then I would say yes, that would be a better thing, because then all the questions, everything would be out on the floor, and the public would have an opportunity to address all the issues. So given that, can we get the applicant to come on and make their presentation?
Alex, could you promote Chuck Wesley? Thank you. Mr. Wesley, if you could let us know who all is on your team, who would be aiding in this presentation? So that we can promote them?
Is the presentation up? There we go.
Mr. Wesley, could you let us know who else is on your team so that we can allow them access to speak?
Just me, thank you.
Okay, great.
Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. My name is Chuck Wesley. I'm one of the managing members of V-Town Farms. And respectfully, we are requesting two changes to the conditions of the use permit this evening. Before I do that, I'd like to quickly recap where the business is at. Right now, our monthly revenues are approximately $750,000, and they ramped up to that, and they've been at essentially that level for the past four months, which is $9 million annualized. We're remitting approximately $45,000 a month in monthly cannabis fees to the city. We currently have 41 employees, 31% are Vallejo residents. When we hired, 55% of the hires have been Vallejo residents, but currently 31% of our employees are Vallejo residents. We are now hiring 10 more packaging employees with continuing preference for Vallejo residents, and those jobs start at $18 per hour with company-paid benefits. Pertaining to the 800 number for neighborhood complaints, that was a requirement in the conditions. In seven months of operation, not one neighborhood, there's been not one neighborhood complaint. There's been one customer complaint pertaining to the way we managed the line some time ago. Pertaining to the community outreach program, which is another condition, we received the invoice on December 10th. The city received the payment on December, on February 15th. And inasmuch as there have been no complaints, this part of the condition may be moved. Next slide, please. Pertaining to the 60% transparency requirement, as Mr. Atkinson mentioned, it's not currently in the code, meaning that even if possible, will damage the aesthetics of the building. And I know that because we came up with a plan that achieved 40%, and the outside of the building looked Frankensteinish with all the metal columns and all of that. And so it will not improve aesthetics, and it will surely diminish safety and security, because I'm sure you're aware that there was one dispensary coastal with a glass storefront that was crashed and grabbed. So glass invites theft and problems. We have enough glass to make it aesthetically pleasing. You can walk up to the front, you can see 80% of what's going on inside simply by looking through the existing glass. So, and again, if we're applying for this today, it would be a minor use permit, and we would not be required to meet this requirement. And I want to emphasize that the building, as it now exists, is both conforming and legal. Next slide, please. Now, on this item, in our application and during the Planning Commission meeting and during the City Council meeting, we notion, as Mr. Atkinson mentioned, that in these other communities, Rio Vista and Antioch, where, by the way, just this evening, we were informed that we won the Antioch Chamber of Commerce Large Business of the Year Award for 2021, because we donate to the community. We support several charities, and we don't do that because required to by code or by order or by use permit. We just do it because it's the right thing to do, and we do that in Rio Vista as well. So what I want to emphasize that we did not offer $600,000. What we notioned was 1% of revenue, as Mr. Atkinson defined it. And if you go back and look at the City Council meetings on the 27th, first of all, on the 25th, you'll see that 40525 Councilmember Drew raised the matter of $600,000 for the first time. And very importantly, that was raised in the context of V-Town Farms doubling in revenue compared to Cocoa Farms, and Cocoa Farms was doing about $30 million. So 60 million is what our plan was, and there are a lot of good reasons to believe it should have been 60 million. So when it came up to $600,000, we agreed to it. We thought we were going to do 60 million. But I think it's important to note that we did not offer it, and $600,000 came up in the context of V-Town Farms being twice the revenue of Cocoa Farms, which is 60 million. And then, on the meeting on the 7th at 3705, I requested that the $600,000 requirement be changed to 1%. Again, clarified that $600,000 was 1% of 60 million, and simply said that 1% accomplished a lot of things. The request was denied. So again, I'd like to emphasize, respectfully, we did not offer it. We agreed to it in the context of V-Town Farms doubling Cocoa Farms in revenue, which would have been 60 million annually. We're never going to achieve that. We're currently achieving, I think we'll do 9 million this year. Maybe we can get it up to, you know, 12, 13. We'll have to see. We're still pulling levers. No other cannabis companies required to make that donation, and we're still offering 1% of revenue. So for this year, that would be $88,000 if we finish the year with the way I expect. If at some point we are a $60 million business, then the donation will be $600,000, which is what was contemplated at the City Council meetings. So I respectfully stress that the context of the $600,000 is very important, because it was agreed to in the context of V-Town Farms being a $60 million business. So we believe that the requested changes, both the 60% and the 1%, are both reasonable and legal, and we're hoping that you will agree with this and support us. And thank you so much for your time.
Very good. At this time, if there are any questions and clarifications that the commissioners would like to address to Mr. Wesley, now is the time to do that, and then we will open up for public comment. So any questions or clarifications from the commissioners?
Madam Chair, I believe you already opened up public comment. Correct me if I'm wrong on that.
It is open, but we are now allowing the commissioners to ask for questions and clarifications, that then afterwards, everything would be out and on the table for public comment. So they would not have, they would not miss an opportunity to get information that would come after the public comment was closed.
Thank you for that clarification.
Through the chair?
Yes. Yes? I can't hear you.
Oh, through the chair, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that I think you said "public comment" when you meant to say "public hearing," and that was some confusion, but it's okay. I think everyone understands. Thanks.
I understand. So any commissioners? So any commissioners? I see Commissioner Bowman's hand. And then Commissioner Mathulik after that. So Commissioner Bowman? Commissioner Bowman?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear you, which is kind of strange, but okay. Hang on just a second. Okay, I'll just go ahead and ask my question and then, then we'll, then I'll mess with my, my settings. My question is, why was District 2 selected for, for the schools? We don't really, we don't have that many schools in the area that's, that's named. So I'm just curious about why that selection was made. Thank you.
Mr. Wesley, you want to respond to that?
Yes, the business is located in District 2. And, and it was requested by one of the council members.
Okay. Are you satisfied with that, Commissioner Bowman? Given our hand is down, Commissioner Mathulik?
I think Commissioner Bowman was trying to say something.
All right, are you still, Commissioner Bowman, did you have any further questions? You're muted.
I think she was having a problem hearing us too, so I'm not sure if she's even able to hear us.
I've got it figured out. Were you talking to me? Sorry.
All right, did you have any other further questions?
That's.
Did you hear the, the response to your question from Mr. Wesley?
I did not.
Mr. Wesley, would you repeat that, please?
Yes, the business is located in District 2. And the council member from District 2, I'm sorry, I don't recall who that, who that is. But she requested the preference for donations being made to District 2 because the business is located District 2. Were you able to hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Commissioner Mathulik?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Wesley for the presentation. And it provided a lot more clarity to some of the questions that I had. And in particular about the 600,000, because when it was brought to us, it was at the 1%. And so the fact that the clarification of the 600,000 came from a projected amount of, to, which ended up being the 600,000, I think he makes a very compelling argument. He's still making a donation, one way or the other. And which, from my understanding, there are no other dispensaries that are doing this. So I think he is being a forthright business owner by helping, by providing this donation for that. So I would like to, and a quick question for staff. The fact that we reported the letter from the attorney for Mr. Wesley, is, is there a formal letter or reply that needs to come, be sent out? Or does the, or does what happens at today's planning commission meeting and/or the city council, does that fulfill any replies to that letter that we read?
Through the chair, yes. The letter from the attorney for the applicant was to you as a commission to consider, you know, as part of your deliberations. And we do not need to respond separately.
Thank, thank you for that clarification. And so this is where, as a follow-up, I would like to hear staff's reply to Mr. Wesley's presentation along to, along with the replies that the, that their attorney had made. And speaking towards the 60%, I think the applicant also makes a very compelling argument. Understanding the, the CMU and the brick mortar, how the cost impact of putting fenestration in there, where that would be a cost impact along with a security issue. So I think staff had mentioned that, that security was part of the reason for adding 60% fenestration. I'm not sure if that was a misspeak, but I think fenestration actually increases security concerns. From my perspective, from being in retail for, for an extended period of time. So I'd be looking forward to hearing staff's response to Mr. Wesley's presentation and his compelling arguments of the two amendments he's making. And, and to further speak, if he was, and my understanding is he, his amendment, he's trying to apply what is currently in the code. And if the 60% fenestration is not required in there, I, once again, I think that's a compelling argument of, of not having to fulfill that at this point. So that is the, that is my questions, the questions I had for staff. Looking to, for to any responses.
All right, staff, would you want to respond to Commissioner Mathulik before we move on?
Yes, through the chair, I'd like, this is Jonathan Atkinson. I'd like to respond to the questions from Commissioner Mathulak. Do want to just clarify for you, Commissioner, that the requirements for 60% transparency was a code requirement. It was a development standard that the project, the applicant was subjected to when he submitted a major use permit application and the application was deemed complete. The requirement that was in the code identified two aspects of this transparency requirement. We've touched on aesthetics. As far as security goes, point, point taken on your concerns regarding window fenestration, allowing, you know, potential crimes. But it should be noted that this also allows for eyes on the street and allows for people to see in, particularly law enforcement. So that is just a component of the security aspect, but it's also aesthetics. Regarding to, regarding responses to items that the applicant raised in his presentation, I think staff made very clear where, where we stand with our recommendation. The $600,000 was an estimate from the applicant, but it was what the applicant agreed when the council decided to issue the major use permit. You know, ultimately, this decision tonight will be, you know, up to the commission. Whether you believe that these amendments have, have merit. We are recommending that the, as you know, this particular approval remain as it is with the original conditions.
All right, you're fading in and out, Mr. Atkinson, so. All right, is he there?
No, I, through the chair, that concluded my response. I was looking over to my colleagues. I thought one of them was going to, to weigh in. But that concluded my questions, or my response to the question, sorry.
All right, all right, Commissioner Mathulik, is there any further questions or clarifications?
Not at the time, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right, then we will go to Vice Chair Stamps.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair, I'd also like to thank Mr. Wesley for the presentation. And I only had a couple of questions. I wanted to ask Mr. Wesley if he could summarize for us what the status of the COA compliance is for the original use permit for the project. In other words, are there any outstanding conditions, anything that hasn't been fulfilled? Or are there any, are there any conditions that are still being worked through with staff at the city since you've received the temporary certificate of occupancy to begin running the business? I'm particularly interested in a couple of conditions. COA number 10, which was the proactive public outreach where the city engaged a consulting service that you alluded to making the payment for back, back in February. I think the date in the staff report was March 15th, when that's going to get off the ground. But if you have any other information or elaborate, can elaborate on what the scope of that's going to look like, it would be appreciated. And then lastly, about the windows, I appreciate the point about security and how it could be a risk. And, but I, I do, I did remember reading in the staff report that apparently the windows were on delay because of supply chain issues. So that would imply that the windows had been ordered. I just wanted to see, Mr. Wesley, if you could clarify for us if the windows had indeed been ordered. And now you're having second thoughts about installing those windows? Or were those windows ever even ordered and received at all? And then just one point on that really quick. I do remember that in the March 15th, 2021 staff report where this commission deliberated on this item, there were three window design options in, in the staff report that showed elevations that looked like that they could, you know, be less security risky, if that's a proper way to phrase it. And so, again, are those options, were those options considered? I mean, you know, that, or were they ever a part of the original design going forward? I think that concludes my questions, Madam Chair, and thank you.
All right, Mr. Wesley, would you address those, those issues, product?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Stamps. Pertaining to the windows, no, we did not, we did not order them. Staff was anticipating that because of COVID-related supply chain issues that there might be delay in getting in windows. So it was, it was kind of anticipatory, but no, we never ordered the windows, number one. Number two, yes, we did pursue that design and the engineer came out and we were able to achieve 40%. But again, the building looked kind of Frankensteinish because we had to mount these large steel iron beams on the outside of the building. But we, we, we could have achieved 40%. That wasn't, that wasn't satisfactory to planning, so that was denied. And see, so yes, we did attempt to engineer and get approved what we presented on those drawings that you saw at the, at the planning commission. Pertaining to the community outreach, so in October, November, I was approached by planning and they, they have selected a contractor to serve as the, the person who's leading the community outreach. So there's a contractor, a consultant who's leading that. Our obligation is to fund it. So he's, he's driving it. Our obligation is to fund it and then participate to the extent that he requires us to participate. So yes, we've, we've done everything that we're required to do at that point, given the progress of that. I think those were the three questions, Commissioner Stamps.
Also, if there are any other outstanding conditions of approvals still in process of being complied with or anything?
Conditions, no, all of the, all the conditions have been met except for the 60%. And on the TCO, there were two items for the TCO. One was the 60%, one was the trash, the trash enclosure in the back of the building. And unfortunately, we provided a contractor $30,000 to buy materials and put it up. And he misappropriated it, to put it lightly. And so over a period of time, he tried to scrape together the funds to do it and he got the block up. And then city came out and inspected it and, and found he bought and installed the wrong blocks. He had to tear it down. We now have a new contractor out there. So we've, we've been patient, we've worked with this gentleman patiently and accepted his promises. Oh, I'm going to get to it next week. You know how it goes. We already have $30,000 into it. So basically what's happening is we're walking away from the 30,000. We retained another contractor. I believe he's got one, one of the four pipes of block up and it was inspected. And I think he's working on the next four. So that'll be done hopefully in the next month or so. But that's, I'm embarrassed by the delay in that. But again, we funded it and the, and the funds were misappropriated.
Thank you for the detail, Mr. Wesley. I appreciate that. That concludes my questions, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Palmeiras, I see your hand is up.
Got you on mute.
Commissioner Palmeiras?
I apologize. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Mike?
No, I, I still want to speak.
Oh, all right, go right ahead. Oh, I don't see.
I, I, I lowered my hand and anyway, I still have three questions. So I have three questions, two for staff and one for Mr. Wesley. So the first two for staff, which schools and nonprofits are these, is the donation earmarked to go to? The second question is, the 60% transparency, you know, how do we arrive at that specific percentage? Is that like a generally recognized percentage for aesthetics? Or was there some sort of conversation about that? The last question for Mr. Wesley. So I got that you didn't offer the $600,000 and council member, Drew, I believe, you know, asked that question. But did you resist that offer or resist that agreement? Or was it just on the moment you said yes? So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Wesley, you want to address that and then the staff can answer the other two questions.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Palmeiras. No, I did not resist it. I agreed to it in the context of V-Town Farms producing twice the revenue of Coco Farms, $60 million. And so, yes, I agreed to it in the context of that. And remember, this all came up during the course, I'm not sure if you've seen the video of that city council meeting, but it was, it was very, fairly animated, let's put it that, let's put it that way. But, so we were under a lot of pressure to get approved, but we were confident that we were going to do 60 million. So 600,000 is 1% of 60 million. And even if we only achieved 50 million, 600,000 was still affordable. But at nine million, it never, it never occurred to me, this would only be a $9 million business. Let me share a few things with you, just very quickly. Coco Farms is in an old industrial, remote part of Antioch with no natural traffic. Cement trucks, maybe a pickup truck now and then. There's no national, natural traffic. It's a much smaller facility. It has half the parking of Vallejo. So here, and it's doing 30 million. So here's Vallejo on Highway 29, natural traffic all day long, twice the parking, a beautiful facility, three, actually three times larger than Coco Farms. There's no reason this facility should only be doing 9 million. And hoping someday we can, you know, figure out why the heck that's happened. But we were completely confident we would hit 60 million. And so, and again, I did bring up the 1% at the second meeting where they were approving the conditions. But no, I did not resist the 600 because again, in the context of a $60 million company, which we are confident we are building, we agreed to it.
Very good. Now would staff answer the, my comments on the other two questions?
Through the chair?
Yes.
In regards to, yes, in regards to schools and nonprofits in District 2 being earmarked, the condition allowed the applicant to choose local nonprofits and schools in District 2. It is an annual donation and the business has not been in operation for a year or so. Staff has, has not been made aware of any donations being made to date or any particular schools or nonprofits being earmarked. With respect to how we arrived at the 60% transparency requirement, this particular code requirement was, was in effect at the time that all of us came on board with the city. Just in my professional experience, I've seen transparency requirements and other codes. And they typically are somewhere around just shy and just north of 50%. So I'm, my best guess is that that's how we arrived at this particular number in our code, or in our previous code.
Is that satisfy you, your clarification, Commissioner Palmeiras?
So just a follow-up question to Mr. Atkinson. So, Mr. Wesley, they have complete discretion as to whom or to what they want to donate those funds. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, but to, to a point, it has to be, if you read the condition, it does note city council District 2. The applicant would have to present city staff with evidence that donations were made to, to actual nonprofits and schools in District 2. But there's discretion as to who they would donate.
Okay, I, I saw the verbiage primarily in the, one of the proposed, I guess, amendments. Was it primarily District 2 or only District 2?
If you give me one moment, I'll, I'll pull that language up just for the sake of reference. Uh, if you give me one moment, I'll, I'll pull that language up uh just for the sake of reference.
Primarily.
Through the chair, that is correct, uh, primarily those residing in District Two. Um, that does not preclude the owner of the business from donating to other nonprofits and schools outside of city council District Two, but um it does note primarily and that is um not quantified.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you so much.
All right, um, Commissioner Blind?
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't, uh, let's see, five questions, three for staff and two for the applicant. Um, would it be best if I asked them one at a time or lined them up?
I would say do the client uh questions and then do the staff questions.
Okay, very good. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Wesley, for your presentation. Um, I have a similar question to Commissioner Stamps. Um, it does not appear to me that fenestration was part of your construction. Um, otherwise there would be some fenestration that was just lacking glass. At what point in your construction did you decide not to pursue the fenestration that would have achieved the sixty percent? And at what point did you notify city staff that you had made this in-construction decision?
The um, we added, we added two glass doors during construction, uh, because those were in the plan and they were permitted. Um, we were, we were issued a TCO because we didn't have a, an engineered, we had a a notional plan that you saw during the planning commission meeting, but we didn't have an engineered plan. And so they were providing time for us to engineer a plan and then to um implement it. And so when the engineer came out, we put together the engineer plan with the engineer and the architect. We discovered we were able to meet more precisely forty-two percent transparency. Uh, and so that's what was presented to the city and the city said they would not approve it because it didn't meet the sixty percent condition. So at that point, um, I uh pursued um getting the change to the uh uh conditions of use, the use permit conditions.
Okay, thank you. Um, one more question for you, thank you. Um, the school donations, um, that gives me a little bit of a concern. Uh, most donations I see to schools from corporations usually come with uh recognition programs or branding programs where the students are made aware of where these donations are coming from. Do you have any intention to be uh using any sort of recognition or branding that the students be aware of the money that was coming to them and what its source was?
We, we intend to donate to schools, but beyond that, I don't have specifics of that. We have an architect that have planned. Um, so I don't have any specifics on that. To date, I can say that we've contributed only twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, I'm aware of, I could explain five thousand of that was to the um, the toy drive by the Solano AIDS Coalition uh down on the waterfront during Christmas. That's the, that's the only one that I'm, I'm directly aware of, that was five thousand. But to date, we've contributed twelve thousand five hundred.
Okay, uh, I'd hope there wouldn't be any sort of recognition or branding that would come with that donation um that would have the kids be made aware of.
I'm sorry, I missed that. No, we, no, we, we never do that. No, it, it's, there's never anything that um, that entices minors to use cannabis. There's no, nothing like that at all. There's no branding, nothing like that at all.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um, okay, a couple of questions for staff. Um, first one is how are we, uh, what's the mechanism for us verifying the revenue um that um V-Town Farms is generating annually?
Through the chair?
Yes?
The mechanism for staff to verify um annual revenue from V-Town Farms? Um, so that's information that we can confidentially obtain from the, the finance department as to what V-Town Farms is, is grossing on an annual basis.
Okay, and so the, then the excise taxes and other taxes that the city applies would go on to that gross, is that right?
May I?
Through the chair, can you repeat that question, please?
I was just, the gross would be what any percentage of taxes would be applied to, of course. But the applicant wants a percentage to be applied to the post-tax revenue?
Yes.
Through the chair, that is
Okay.
correct. The, the applicant's request involves subtracting the um excise and uh youth taxes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, now, it seems like perhaps the most salient thing is there is a economic hardship case being made for what the six hundred thousand would do. Um, given less revenue than projected as well as the amount of money being uh put into the um increased fenestration to achieve sixty percent. Has the city uh allowed for other kind of hardship amendments um to major use permits that you can think of?
Um, I'm not aware of, of hardship amendments being made to a major use permits. And I would state that um that there's a process to apply for variance, which would be a planning commission decision. You know, typically, that is a hardship that is not the um, you know, cause of the, the applicant or the property owner. For example, if your parcel is shaped like a trapezoid and you're trying to fit a house on that parcel and meet setbacks, that might be a situation where you request a variance. Um, I can't say that this is a situation where you, where one would request a variance. I don't think this could be the, the findings for a variance in our code.
Right, okay. Um, and finally, um, I'm just a little concerned, um, could use clarity on the, the sixty percent of the facade. It feels like you could just define the facade of this building in several different ways. In your presentation, you defined it as that portion of the uh front facade that was beneath the mansard. Um, is there an alternative definition uh between the uh outermost columns um that we could apply in this situation that would receive something um closer to what you want? Seems like there's some, um, there's some art in where, where you apply that sixty percent.
I'm not aware of, of any alternative definition or way to uh view this particular area that would need to have sixty percent transparency. I think that the area that was called out in my exhibit was actually, if I'm being honest, a fairly generous way to look at this provision.
As opposed to it being a full facade?
Yes.
If I could just um add on, when we were looking at what was considered the facade, we considered the retail operations only. There is a portion of the business which is um a back office, um, the uh minor man- manufacturing that is on that side of the building. But we did not consider that when uh considering the transparency. First of all, just the, the way the code read and the way the condition read, it was the retail, applied to the retail portion. We thought that was accurate and it just wasn't appropriate to have windows in a break room, bathroom, manufacturing area, it just didn't make any sense. So we actually limited that scope um of, of the facade. There's also another portion of the building to the right, as you're looking at it, that is not part of V-Town and that was not considered as part of it either.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I happen to have the zoning code open and I wanted to read the definition of a building facade because I think that might, uh, that was addressing Commissioner Blind's comment. Um, through our, our zoning code, it says, "That portion of any exterior elevation of a building extending vertically from grade to top of parapet, walls, or eaves, and horizontally across the entire front width of the building elevation." So that's the, the legal definition of a facade.
Um, if I could add just one more thing. So you have uh near my reduce that um to just the storefront. Um, from what it would say explicitly in the code that you just read us, which would be the entire front facade of the building?
Through the chair? Um, when I was referring to the code and the requirement for sixty percent in the condition, and maybe Jonathan has that available, the actual wording of the condition, it was referring to the retail store, not the, the, the transparency condition is only uh was required by the condition for the retail portion of the store. In the code, the previous code, um, it was also only required for retail cannabis. We didn't do, you know, indoor cultivation or manufacturing laboratory. None of that had that requirement, just the retail portion.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, um, Commissioner Bowman?
Yeah, um, yes, hello. Um, yeah, I do appreciate very much the presentation. It certainly brought some questions up in my mind. Um, first, I do want to clarify, I checked on the um city council. There is no one living in um District Two right now. Um, there's no one in residence. Um, and nor would there be anyone representing it at this time because um the new districts don't come into play until um the next round of elections. Second of all, um, you know, as far as the schools go uh in, in um Region Two, as far as our public schools, that only includes a couple. And that would be Loma Vista, which is a choice school, and Solano, Wheaton, and K through eight. Um, and Dan Mini, uh, which is um K through five, K through six. Okay, so, um, so that's just a small portion of our nineteen campuses. I know that you have the choice to consider nonprofits as well, um, other nonprofits besides just those. But I did just want to point that out to my colleagues in case that information is useful to them. Um, I can see the proportion of one percent. Uh, I can see your argument regarding a one percent versus a six hundred thousand set amount. Um, I understand that. Uh, but I did want to point those things out to you and, and the colleagues on my, um, on the commission. Thank you.
Um, thank you, uh, Commissioner um Douglas.
Hello, but thank you for, for your presentation. I, I just had a couple of questions. So what the sixty, the sixty million dollar figure that, that you projected, um, how, how did you arrive at that? And then how is it that it is um so much different than the receiv- than the business that you're able to do now? Can you talk to me a little bit about that so we can kind of understand? And then secondly, uh, the sixty percent uh, uh, amount of, of, of glazing seems for this business, it seems like a lot. Did you at least consider any other alternatives that um would make sense to you? Maybe it would save you a little bit of money, but that still accomplished the main goal, which is to, to have a, a more open functioning uh business? Um, Chuck, I, I'm Mr. Wesley, I mean, because just getting rid of the um, the whole glazing idea, I don't know, I, I, it would seem that perhaps uh some other way of addressing the, the basic concern of, of, of having more openness for your business uh could have been a, maybe a, a possible solution you could have brought to us. But uh, but the projection of sixty million is so far off, I, I um, I just, maybe you could talk to me a little bit about that, how?
Yes.
Because, you know, it can't kind of look bad in terms of kind of going along with, then later on coming along and saying, well, it's nowhere near that. So maybe, maybe you can explain that to us a little bit better.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, yes, um, again, the, the template for V-Town Farms was Cocoa Farms in Antioch, which is doing thirty million a year. It's, 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 it did thirty million uh in its, in its second twelve months, it did thirty million. It, it ramped up to a hundred thousand in collections a day after day ninety. The thing just was meteoric and, and, and held fast until this, this, this present year has been a down year for cannabis statewide, everybody's down thirty percent. Um, so the template for V-Town was Cocoa Farms. The retail area for Cocoa Farms is three thousand square feet. The retail area here is nine thousand square feet at, so it's three times larger. Cocoa Farms has a hundred and eighteen parking spaces, this has two hundred and fifty-six, it's twice as big. This has all the natural traffic all day long, up and down Highway twenty-nine. V-Town Farms has no natural traffic. It's in an old industrial section of, on, on Wilbur Ave in, in Antioch. So there was, there was every reason to believe that Vallejo would produce sixty million a year. It wasn't just something we pulled out of a hat. Um, there was every reason to believe it. Why we haven't achieved it, we're still scratching our head. We're spending, we're spending dollars on billboards, uh, we do promotions, um, we do um uh other kinds of, you know, digital marketing. Um, we're scratching our heads. Um, some of it's due to this thirty percent slump statewide, but what would that, what would that, you know, maybe three, three or four or five thousand? So best case, maybe I'm up to, you know, fifteen million. I'm nowhere close to fif- to, to sixty million. So Cocoa Farms was the template. We read, we did the math and we said, this is where we can be. Why we haven't achieved it, you know, we're still scratching our head, frankly. Um, and I know you had another uh question, Commissioner. Oh, on sixty percent? Yes, we were happy to, we had a plan, an engineered plan uh that was architected and structurally approved, you know, by our structural engineer to meet forty-two percent. And again, the exterior of the building would have had some iron beams and it wouldn't, wouldn't look nice. I mean, it wouldn't look as nice as it looks now, but nevertheless, it would have achieved forty percent. We actually requested a permit to do that and it was denied. I mean, well, I, I hope. I was just answering your questions, you know?
Well, yeah, I, I think so, but you know, architecturally, I think that, you know, like um including windows, I mean, if you have a good architect, they should really be able to, to, it should enhance the building. Is that a tilt-up construction there? You know?
Is it what?
Tilt-up.
No, 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 it's, it's block.
Oh, it's all block, yeah.
All black, yeah.
Yeah, hmm. But I would suggest that, you know, some sort of alternative design might be something that we, we as commissioners might consider, but just to, to delete the, the entire measure is, is questionable, I think. So that's just my opinion.
Is that it, uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, thank you.
Very good, uh, Commissioner Matulik?
Um, yes, uh, and, and speaking to um Secretary Ratcliffe's um definition of, of the sixty percent, did, did you say that it was sixty percent from the floor all the way up to the parapet?
Hope not.
Excuse me, Commissioner Matulik, I think you meant Margaret Kavanaugh Lynch.
Oh, was that, I, whoever, whoever said the sixty percent with a definition going up to the parapet, I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly.
Through the chair, the definition in the current code of a building, building phase or facade does uh include um that portion of the exterior elevation of a building extending vertically from grade to the top of parapet, wall, or eaves, and horizontally across the entire front width of a building elevation. And I just want to add that we use the, the furniture of a facade to, to calculate many things in a zoning code, including the size of their signs, et cetera. So that's, um, but the definition is um as, as stated. And then I just want to make clear that, and was stated by Director Ratcliffe, that it was um the dispensary component of this facade that they were looking at. It wasn't the, um, any other aspect of the project. So that's, that's, those two concepts together talk about the facade of this building.
Okay, because I'm, I'm challenged to understand the, the, up to the parapet and I, I'm, and Commissioner um Douglas can, can back me on this one. It, it doesn't seem like sixty percent would, would come close to um meeting. It'd be very difficult to meet it on this particular facade because I think, what is that building, about thirty feet high? Twenty, thirty feet high? So, so to get sixty percent of that up to the So to get 60% of that up to the parapet, I think we're very challenged. So I just want to just make sure I heard that correctly. But when I heard Mr. Wesley's argument for an amendment, he's making the case of if he was going to apply for a permit today, that 60% would not qualify. So I just want to understand from staff, is he correct on that of saying that if this project went forward today and like it never existed, would that 60% apply?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Jonathan Atkinson, I'm going to answer some of the questions that were raised. I'm going to ask that the slideshow get put back on the screen just for the sake of reference. So to answer your last question regarding whether or not this requirement is in the code. So I want to make it very clear that there was a copy and paste error on the part of the city when the code was adopted. So the code that went in front of the commission and got adopted by council missed half of the retail cannabis regulation. So to answer your question, yes, if an applicant were to come in today and apply, that's not in the code anymore. With respect to the definition of facade that was just read by Secretary Kavanaugh Lynch and the current requirement, if you could actually go to the slide with the exhibit, the transparency requirement, sorry. So I just wanted to just, thank you for the patience, by the way. So I just wanted to clarify that the definition that was read into the record is in the current code. The code requirement that this particular project was subject to was in the previous code. And it's my understanding that that definition was not in the previous code. Staff looked at the storefront and the retail area. And the retail area is the area that's highlighted in yellow. So there would be no requiring windows to be installed above the parapet or up against the mansard. It's literally the area that is highlighted within the yellow box. It'd be 60% of that area.
So 60%, okay, of the yellow box. So it would be something less than what we're looking at in terms of the yellow box, right?
That's correct. The yellow box does not mean that.
Let me through the chair, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I also want to say through the chair, my apologies. The yellow rectangle, that whole area does not have to be windows or storefront glass. That is the area that we are measuring against the 60% requirement. So 60% of that particular area would need to be storefront windows, transparent materials, basically glass.
So to continue with Commissioner Matulik's question, then the glass wouldn't really have to go all the way from the floor all the way to the bottom of the parapet, right?
Through the chair.
I mean, it could be kind of like, like we're looking at the major doors, entrances that are there. And if he were able to, I don't know, put in two, three more of those to, you know, to get visibility into the operation, that would be a significant improvement, I think. I mean, that's just my opinion. But because, but I don't, I was listening to the owner and I failed to see that outside of just putting the structure in for the glass and windows, aluminum, all that, that you don't really need a whole lot other than a header beam to cover the weight of the building up above the glass. So I'm kind of confused as to what are you saying? That I don't see that you need a lot of structure, frankly.
So who are you addressing that to?
I'm talking to the owner, this particular point. I was wondering what he heard from his architect and engineers.
Yes, thank you.
Doug?
Yeah. The architect and the structural engineer and I and some other people met and walked the inside. And there are obstructions in the inside where you can't place windows. And so we said, here's the maximum, here's the amount of glass we want. Here are all the areas we can put glass. Then the structural engineer came back and said, you know, given the size of the beams and so forth, the vertical beams and the header beams, this is what you need for structure. And this only leaves 42% for glass. So the structural components took up a lot of, I mean, you look at this, you go, geez, 60%, not a problem. But the structural components that the building doesn't fall down took up a lot of that space. So all that was left was 42%. And again, this was a structural engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Matulik, you had the floor.
Yeah, just one last question for the applicant. Had you looked at leaving the facade as it is and doing a pop out with stick storefront for glazing? In other words, maybe creating a vestibular that would suffice for that 60% along with putting a bunch of ballers there for security issues? Because that may be the most cost effective way potentially to meet this requirement as opposed to having to, because I understand now how having to break through all that CMU and put all those metal headers in there, that's a very costly impact. But if you do a pop out with storefront, that might be part of your solution.
Thank you. First of all, I want to clarify that cost was not an issue. I think the plan that we have was going to cost $100,000. And if it hadn't been approved, we would have spent $100,000. That was our estimate. No, we didn't consider what you're proposing. If that's acceptable to the city, then I would meet with the structural engineer and the architect and see what we can do. That, if that satisfies, if that's in the spirit of transparency and the city adopts, agrees with that, then we would certainly be willing to take that approach.
And would we, would that be in our purview to be able to look at some of these design elevations? To see if that would, to get our input, the commissioner's input on that? And that was a question to staff.
Thank you.
Through the chair, yes, that would be within the purview of the planning commission to do that.
Are there any more questions, Commissioner Matulik?
That was all the questions that I had at this.
All right. I see your hand is up. Commissioner Douglas, did you have another question or comment?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't push the button to lower it. Thank you.
Very good. Let me make sure there are no other hands. All right, now, yes.
Apologies. Interim Director Radcliffe, if I could, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that I heard the applicant say and that I did not hear the applicant say. I do know that he mentioned that he didn't hear about any outreach invoice until recently. We have been communicating about that since it was approved. I did have a hard time finding a contractor, a consultant to do the outreach. We did that, found them in October and forwarded the scope and budget and requested the deposit at that time and have been requesting it periodically. And it was finally paid in February. I did want to mention that the applicant did submit approved plans to the building department that had 60% transparency that we were fine with. He also submitted a letter from his structural engineer that said that in order to go forward with that, they needed further study to determine what needed to be done with that. At that time, the applicant requested a temporary certificate of occupancy because windows were on back order as much as 16 weeks. And that is why I granted the temporary certificate of occupancy. I also wanted to say that there are some other things that are not done with, in the building. The mechanical permit was also supposed to be submitted at the same time as the windows and the transparency requirement. That has not been done. That involves, that means that right now, and I talked to our chief building official today, earlier today about this, they do not have air conditioning. They do not have heating and they do not have the air purifier, which was a requirement of the city council for this business. Also wanted to say that the applicant had multiple opportunities and much discussion on the condition of approval for the 600,000. There was a lot of discussion about that and agreed to that. That being said, for those two, the commission has the authority and that's why we brought it to you today, to change those requirements, to modify those requirements, to accept the applicant's amendment as he stated. Staff did not feel that it was appropriate since both the planning commission and the council weighed in quite strongly on the transparency issue and the council weighed in on the 600,000. That was not something that staff could approve, certainly not waiving or reducing at all. So with that, just wanted to clarify those things.
Thank you. I see Mr. Wesley's hand. Are you up to speak again, sir?
If I could?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to respond to some of the things that were just mentioned. Yes, we did present an architectural rendering for 60%. But then when the structural engineer showed up, she concluded that with all of the structure, the ironwork that had to go in, we could not achieve the 60%. So we used every inch that we could, whether it was iron or maybe in some cases there are obstructions or the glass, we got 42%. That's the best that we could do. The architectural rendering was before the structural engineer came out and said, no, we have to have iron in these places so you can achieve 60%. So that's one clarification. The other one is the air purifier, yes, that air purifier has been put in. It was put in before we opened. And on the mechanical permit, I'm afraid there's some confusion on that because we were informed by building that we weren't required to have air conditioning. And so we didn't, we didn't, we were ready to issue a permit for, to request a permit for air conditioning, but we were told we didn't have to have it. So we never issued, we never requested a permit for air conditioning. We can certainly do that, but I didn't understand that that was part of the TCO. So I have to apologize for that. Oh, and on the other thing, again, all I said was, all I said was, we received the invoice on that December date and we paid it on that February date. That's all I said about that. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions or clarifications before we open it up for, open up the public hearing? If not, it is now open for, the public hearing portion is now open. Are there any attendees that wanted to make comments, make questions or make statements?
Through the chair, there are two hands raised.
All right. So. One, I don't know who was first, but Ms. DiHopp, if she would like to take the floor at this time?
How much time would you like to allow Chair Thompson?
Oh, three minutes.
Thank you.
Kathleen DiHopp, go ahead.
Yeah, this Kathleen DiHopp. I wanted to just clarify, the 1% was that when they came through, they said, we are really good citizens, we donate 1%. When it got to the city council, city council said, let's write that into your permit. So you're saying that, let's make it a, let's make it a stick. If you had tried to do that, I'm sure the city attorney would have said, you have no nexus. You have no way to exact that. I'd suggest to you, just a thought, punt the ask on the 1% said 300,000. Just refer that up to the city council for a decision. It got imposed there, you didn't impose it. I would suggest that I think that I'd like to respectfully, they are using one of the other storefronts just for storage. There's a decent sized storefront that is next to the sushi. That wasn't included in the permit. You walk up, it's very transparent, there's a window and it's all being used for this. It wasn't included in the permit to be uses for this and it takes a retail storefront out of our retail market. So I'd like Mr. Atkinson to clarify what he meant about their in compliance. All of, much of this conversation about transparency happened when we heard it before and the commission as a whole voted that they thought it was okay. There was a different angle is what I remember was a concept that you could see at least 60%. And where this came from is, you may remember Chair and Commissioner Matulik, remember we had in the Joseph Room, we were doing dots, we were talking about what would good retail storefronts look like? It was the earlier staff recognized a lot of the investment in town was happening because of cannabis and we wanted them to fix up the old buildings. But that 60% was much more about a setting like a Long Tennessee. And it was about not making it a dark smoky room. I think that you should think about what is the public good? I almost would rather there were requirements that they maintain that parking lot and landscaping, things that they're doing, but it really is appropriate. Finally, it makes more sense when Director Radcliffe just explained it, the TC, they let them move forward without doing the visit because of supply chain issues. But you're in a very awkward position where there was a requirement imposed by the permit, continue to be opposed on the appeal, but your staff let them open. And now they're coming back and re-asking it. And it's really hard. You'd look like you were shutting down a business. I think it'd be good to understand better what discretion staff has to let businesses move forward without doing what they're required to in the permit. Or if they actively are not following the permit, at when do staff step in and shut them down? These are really questions for you to think about. Thank you.
The next speaker, please.
Ivana, go ahead, please.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Madame Thompson, for the opportunity to speak this evening and share my experience with Mr. Wesley. My name is Ivana Verdusco. I am the security service provider for V-Town Farms. I have been providing service for this facility for the past 18 months. And it has been an amazing journey to see what transformation this establishment has taken. I met with Mr. Wesley back in August 2020 and we devised a plan on how we would clean this property and establish order. I am very proud to say that we have provided service for the past 18 months and it has been a very positive experience. We have had zero altercations or any type of misconduct since opening. And I just wanted to share my positive experience with this great person that I have been able to partner with. I really appreciate your time and listening and this concludes my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Laurie, go ahead, please.
Yes, I am Laurie. I was working with HTP previously and I am now with V-Town Farms. I am now an assistant manager there. And working there, I can definitely say that V-Town Farms has been a community outreach for all of the cannabis community for Vallejo. We have the lowest prices around. I've had multiple customers come over from HTP actually there and actually say that they love the place, everything that's happening. You know, we are one of the only clubs that does give back quite the way we do. I would say that we have a big role in terms of, you know, helping out everyone around. I would have to say that Martin and Andy both stop in regularly to talk to me and all the other managers that are on board. They also like to stop in and let us know that they're going to connect us with other stores to drive sales competitively, which I don't believe many other dispensaries will do. We actually will do that just to make sure that we're on top of our survivability compared to like most other stores. They have to always make sure that, I don't know, they're just trying to bring in and drive all these sales for marketing and all these other techniques. But we're trying to make sure we're meeting these quotas that way so we can always give back to the community. So overall, I would say that V-Town is a place that helps the local community. They always thrive and give back. If Vallejo wants to see more out of us, I would just say, you know, just give us some support in terms of like shouting us out. The 60% transparency definitely does kind of like, I would say, in my opinion, it'll add a lot of theft. And in terms of like advertisement, I personally think that there's going to be a lot of people driving by there, going between picking up kids or, you know, going to Napa or going out on vacation. In terms of the transparency, that's just going to allow more people to see. In terms of the transparency, that's just going to allow more people to see what a dispensary is, rather than it being more of like a, you know, a safe thing. I personally think that that should be something that shouldn't be transparent. It should be something that is, you know, like a bar. You don't have people just handing drinks out freely out in, you know, public. People can't drink freely out in public, same thing. So personally, I think that we're really doing a great job at H, at V-Town, and transferring everything over from what HTP had. So that's going to be my comment for today, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Linda Klein, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Linda Klein. I am the attorney who represents V-Town Farms, and thank you for reading my letter that was sent earlier today. I just wanted to follow up on a couple of the comments that I heard that were, really got to the purpose of a transparency requirement in starting code. And I, you know, represent developers across the Bay Area. I've read a lot of codes. I am a planning commissioner in my own city. And typically, transparency requirements are about more urban settings where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic, and not generally applied in an area like this, that's sort of a former power center. And one of the things I think is really intelligent about your new code is that the transparency requirement does apply to all commercial uses within 20 feet of a street. This particular storefront is 200 feet from the nearest street, which is a pretty like fast street, so you're not going to be driving in car and sort of catching a glimpse through a window from 200 feet away. So it's not really, doesn't really serve the purpose of enlivening a street front to have that requirement here. And that seems to me the purpose why the code changed when it went through the update. I just wanted to add that perspective to the other perspectives you've heard today. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Mario Salsido, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Peggy. Hello, commissioners, my name is Mario Salsido. I'm the CEO of the Solano Ice Coalition. First of all, I want to say thank you very much to V-Town Farms for the $5,000 contribution to the Solano Ice Coalition toy drive. The Solano Ice Coalition is a nonprofit organization that has been working with the community entirely for 18 years. I just have a couple of comments. I mean, like I say, we, we, the Solano Ice Coalition and our members, we support any businesses or any that come and bring changes and support our community. We are a nonprofit, and we are need the monies to keep doing the work that we're doing in the community. One, I just have a couple of, I noticed a couple of things in here that I like to comment on, and I think that it's very important that we are, when it's coming to charity and donations, it's very important that the monies go into the whole Vallejo, not only District 1. Because the reality is that there is so many small nonprofits and a lot of different schools in other areas in Vallejo that they can be very well held with the donations from V-Town. So that's one of the things that I think that it should be go to all the districts in Vallejo, not only District 2. The other, the other thing that I have a comment in is, I see that it's been mentioned that no other collectives, they are being donating to the community. In 2013, in 2013, the Solano Ice Coalition has been surviving only, and the programs that the Solano Ice Coalition is have in place, they've been surviving thanks to the generosity of three collectives in town that they are donating. So we have Vallejo College Health Center, we have Better Health Group, and we have Highway 39. They are being helping, they are also, I mean, they are donating every month revenue to all the programs that not only the Solano Ice Coalition have, other nonprofit organizations, and not even nonprofits. So they are working with the homeless and other, the veterans and other community in the, in the community. So I think that was one of the things that I want to comment on. But this, again, the Solano Ice Coalition is very grateful of the V-Towns come up last year and donate $5,000 towards the toy drive for our kids. And again, the support, it will go, and it can go all over to them. We will support them, but I mean, that's the two.
All right, thank you. The next speaker, please.
Tony, go ahead, please.
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me? All right, I just want, I'm just here really quickly to speak on the charitable donation. And if I remember correctly, initially, council wanted to push their request a little bit down the road, and I remember V-Town's farm, they were actually threatening to pull their investment initially. And so I say that to say that, if I remember correctly in this meeting, they were really grasping at anything, and were willing to, V-Town Farms was, willing to agree to anything to get their shop opened up and, you know, start to make it a profit. So for them to come back and ask for this, you know, this to be removed, I think is pretty, I don't think it's fair to the community because you were willing to, and you wanted to rush our council to open up, to help you open up your store so you can, you know, take our money, but now that, you know, you're not making what you thought you would from the, from the, from the neighborhood, now you want to pull back your donation. I just don't think that's fair. Thank you for your time.
Very good. Are there any more? I don't see any other hands up. Navid, would you confirm that?
Yes, this concludes the speakers.
All right, then that, the chair closes the public hearing at this particular time. Now, Commissioners, this is the time that you make the considerations based on all the information that you've heard tonight. So if there's any clarifications or any statements that any commissioner would like to make, now is the time to do it so that we can go into making any motions that we need to make considering the issues at hand. So are there any other questions or clarifications or statements that any of the commissioners? Commissioner Mathulak?
So to the, the question to the applicant is, it sounds like he attempted to meet that 60%, but due to structural restrictions, he was not able to meet that? Is that what we're hearing?
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I may say so, I, I think that is, has not been proven, at least not to staff and this chief building officials' knowledge. He has informed us that, you know, he believes it may be possible, but we have received no information that it, that it is not possible or feasible.
All right, I see Mr. Wesley's hand up, so I assume that you want to make a comment to that statement?
Yes, yes, thank you. Again, again, we met with the architect, we took the architect's rendering, we met with the architect and the structural engineer, we looked at the storefront, we walked the, we walked the whole retail, you know, length, and she, she came back with a design that all we could do is 42% because of the need for structural uprights. And that's what was, that, and so we put together a building permit application and submitted it, and it was denied.
Commissioner Mathulak?
Madam Chair, this is Vice Chair Stans. Before we move on, may I recommend that we close the public hearing officially so that we can move into the commission's deliberation?
Right, the public hearing is closed at this particular time. We were just having the commissioners go over any, make any statements that they needed to make so that we could come to a formal action concerning this. So Commissioner Mathulak, were you finished with your statement, your question?
Well, yeah, that was the question I had, and it sounds like we're, we're kind of in a quandary because the applicant's saying they can't meet that requirement, and staff is saying that they should be able to. So I'm not sure, where do we go from here regarding that particular item?
Commissioner Palmeiras?
Thank you, Chair. So through the chair to Ms. Radcliffe, just for clarification, do you mean to say that the chief building official was not convinced, or they had not received adequate evidence? Because I think there's kind of a difference between those two things.
Through the chair.
Yes.
So the applicant submitted, as, as he said, something that had a 42%. Planning did not approve that because the condition of approval said 60% was required. The applicant never submitted anything indicating that the 60% was not feasible or not possible. The last information that we have on the 60% was, as I said, a letter from the applicant's engineer stating that more study was needed.
Okay, thank you.
And I asked my co-chair to make a summary. As the chair, I'm overseeing a lot of information, and my notes are very scattered. So can you sort of summarize this for the commission so that we can go forward with an action?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Madam Chair. Did you want me to summarize the action we're supposed to be taking or the information we've received so far?
Actually, the action that we're supposed to be taking. So that, that would, there would be a motion, that would be clarity on the type of motions that should come forth.
Sure. So for the commissioners, staff is seeking the planning, or is recommending the planning commission deny our resolution, or excuse me, adopt a resolution denying a request from the applicant to modify conditions of approval in the original permit, UP 20-0008, those conditions regarding the $600,000 annual charitable contributions and the 60% transparency requirement for the storefront.
Very good. So we will make that, is the attorney, we would like to make that two motions if that is acceptable?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'm sorry for clarification. I wasn't making a motion, I think.
No, 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 I'm asking, since you, we broke it up into two, one for the 60% requirement and the other regarding the donation. I know that it comes under one, so I want to know if the commission would like to make that two motions or make that one motions with any kind of conditions or as presented by the staff.
Madam Chair, if I may take a guess at that, I think the resolution captures both of those proposed amendments, and so our action on that one resolution would cover both of those items, I do believe, unless staff will correct.
Through the chair, this is.
Yes.
Assistant City Attorney Laura Zegarli. The resolution is a denial, if you adopted it, would deny the request for the amendments for both conditions. If you wanted to deny one of the requests and grant another request, you would give direction to staff, you would not adopt this resolution, you would make a different motion. They would come back with a resolution that clarified that you were granting one of the requests and denying the other. Does that make sense?
Very good. Yes, it does. I see Commissioner Palmeiras' hand.
Thank you, Chair. Would it be appropriate and possible for us to quantitatively firm up that language of primarily District 2, as far as where the donations will be going? I mean, regardless of what we choose.
Through the chair, and I would defer to the city attorney on this, but that, we had not given you any language to change that. The resolution contains the denial. If you wanted to either approve or modify one of the conditions of approval, then you would need to give, I'm sorry, the commission would need to give staff direction on the findings, the specifics of what you wanted to do, the action you wanted to take, either, you know, full approval or a modification, and we would need direction on the findings from the commission so that we could come back to you with a resolution that accurately stated those.
Okay, thank you.
Right, given that, that's it for you. Commissioner Palmeiras?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
All right, given that, that this is now, we're at the point of either approving or disapproving or offering a modification. So the, there's a motion, if one would make a motion to one or the other of those. All right, I see Commissioner Blind's hand. I see, all right, Commissioner Blind, you were first.
Okay. It seems to have a couple of parts, but I'm going to move to not adopt the resolution and instead refer the donation amendment question to the council. And I would seek to direct staff to propose, and the applicant, to propose some additional studies with alternative fenestrations. It feels to me that 60% or 42% or existing conditions, which we don't know the percent of, is a little abstract, and I'd rather see some elevations, both from the parking lot as well as the street, so we could get a better sense of what would be appropriate before adopting a resolution.
Through, through the chair, let me, let me, before you consider that motion, here someone seconds it. The planning commission cannot refer this to the council, so you need to make a motion. The appellant can, someone can appeal it to the council, but you cannot refer it to the council directly. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. So we could either approve or deny, and then it'll be up the applicant to move it to the council, is that correct?
Correct. If I could, through the chair, clarify just one thing. Tonight, you have before you a resolution for denial. You can act on that, or you can direct staff to prepare a different resolution for approval or modification of either of those. But we would have to come back to you with that resolution.
Right.
Is that understood by all? Yes, Commissioner Blind?
Is one option for additional information, including additional studies?
I believe that would come under the title, label of a modification, that staff would come back, but staff has to clarify that.
Do you want to do that? Through the chair, yes, that would be a modification, and you would, we would need, you would need to give us direction as, so that we would know, and so that the applicant would be clear on what you specifically you were asking for. And then you would, we would bring it back to you for, for your consideration.
Is that clear to you, Commissioner Blind?
Yes, it is. And with that, I will retract my motion.
All right, Commissioner Mathulak, I see your hand, is that?
Yes, I would move that we accept the 1% donation from the applicant, along with drawings that are structurally feasible for the 60%.
All right, is there any questions on that?
I think interim director Radcliffe has a comment. Just, just to clarify, so you would be recommending that staff bring back a resolution changing the donation to 1% rather than the $600,000, and bring back modifications or proposed modifications for the transparency requirement? I wasn't quite clear on what you were asking for that one.
Yes, because the premise behind that one is, is you're claiming that there is a feasible way to get the 60%, and so I'm, I'm asking the And so I'm asking the applicant to complete her, their due diligence with the structural engineer to prove it one way or the other.
Through the chair, that, to clarify, that would be holding them to their current condition? Because that's the normal process that the applicant is supposed to comply with. So I don't think they would bring it back to you. They would, you would just be upholding the condition that already exists. And then that would flow from that. Oh, did I misunderstand you?
Do you want to restate that, Commissioner Mathulik?
No, that is, that is my understanding, is that, because if they're unable to meet that, then they would, they would not be able to submit drawings accordingly. So they would, they would be, they would not be in compliance with the, with the resolution or the permit.
Okay.
I could try to address this. There is, everyone looks confused up here on the dice.
Hands are everywhere.
So the applicant has not proven or submitted sufficient evidence to the planning department or the building official that meeting the 60% requirement is not feasible. So you're trying to give him extra leeway to do that. He already has that leeway. He's supposed to be bringing that in and he hasn't done it. So what you would be telling him by upholding or by adopting the current resolution, if you did, if you chose to do that, would be, yes, you need to come in and prove that, you know, submit more drawings and do your due diligence and bring in your drawings to meet the 60%.
Because I heard, yes, because I heard him say that cost is not an issue. So if there is a will and a way structurally to do it, I'm sure he, their structural engineer would be able to come up
Correct.
with a feasible plan.
That's what the building official has informed planning staff. So that's correct. Thank you.
Before I go to Commissioner Blind and Commissioner Douglas, would you restate that again, your motion, Commissioner Mathulik?
Yes, I move that we accept the 1% donation along with having the applicant comply with the current 60% storefront requirement.
All right, now I will go to Commissioner Blind for a question? Or?
I'm going to hold my question and allow the conversation to continue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Commissioner Douglas?
I'm just concerned that, through the chair, that 1%, which he mentioned, I think he said something like $88,000, is a lot different than $600,000. And I just don't feel, or I'm uncertain as to what that's based on. I understand that he wants to exclude any taxes and fees that, that might be part of the calculation. And I think, I, I don't know that that's proper, frankly.
Point of order, there's, there's a motion on the table. There either needs to be a second or it goes away.
We're trying to make a motion, frankly.
The motion has already been made and then now a question. And what you've just stated, you have asked in the past and it has been answered, addressed, rather. So going back to the motion now, unless you have a substitute motion, then we'll go back for a second on the original motion. So did you have a substitute motion?
No.
All right, so then can we now get a second on, stated again, Commissioner Mathulik? So everybody's clear?
Sure.
What this motion is?
Sure, I move that we approve the 1% donation along with upholding the applicant to the 60% storefront requirement.
Very good. Can I get a second on that? I see.
Second to the motion.
Chair, can I add something to that? If we're going to put in that motion, could I also add, sorry, excuse me, that we firm up on that language on District 2, as far as like where those donations go?
Point of order, I don't think that's in the purview of this.
Yes.
Would that just be a separate motion then?
No, because that is not what this, this issue is. It has nothing to do with the donations.
Okay.
All right, it was just the percentage of the donations. So did I hear that Commissioner Stamps, you gave a second to that motion?
Yes.
All right, so it's been first and second.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I apologize, Director Radcliffe here. If you could include in, in the motion findings for the reasoning for the 1%, so that we can come back with that?
Sure.
That would be great.
I'd be happy to. Do you need me to clarify that or point that out now? Or is that during discussion?
We've had a discussion. You need to clarify it now because we have a second on that.
Okay. I'm basing that 1% based on, number one, he's the only dispensary that I'm aware of that's required to do a donation and he's willing to comply with that. And number two, I'm hard pressed to find any company in the past year that has met their projected revenue goals based on COVID and everything like that. So if this is a blip in the market for him, then so be it. But the 1%, as he said, if he did meet his goal of 60 million at one point, it will be 600,000 at that point. So the fact that he's willing to uphold his donation where no one, no other dispensary is forced to do that, then I would like to give him credit for, for keeping his word of willing to put a donation towards the community.
Very good. We have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Blind?
Commissioner Blind, are you there?
Sorry, no.
Commissioner Douglas? Commissioner Douglas, you are, I'm mute, there you go.
No, I'm sorry, I was muted, I'm sorry, no.
Commissioner Bowman?
No.
Commissioner Palmaris?
Aye.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
No.
Commissioner Mathulik?
Sorry, aye?
Vice Chair Stamps?
Aye.
Chair Cohen Thompson?
Yes.
Commission, the, the motion does not pass.
Point of order, I thought, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard Commissioner Palmaris say aye first and then changed it to no, just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
No, it's just, it was nay.
Oh, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, so the final vote is that it, that motion did not pass. Okay, now we will move to the item on the agenda for the annual progress report and the general plan 2021.
Through the chair, through the chair?
Yes.
You need to entertain other motions. You need to make a decision one way or the other on the resolution, the recommendation before you.
I see Commissioner Blind's hand up. Commissioner Blind?
Before I make a motion, can I ask a question of the city attorney, Madam Chair?
Yes, you can.
Just as a way to understand where the applicant would go for here. If we uphold the resolution and deny the amendment particular to the donation, can the applicant go directly to the city council at that point?
They have 10 days in which they can appeal the decision to the council.
Okay, thank you very much. Then with that, I would move to deny, sorry, to uphold the resolution denying the amendment for the donation. If there's a way we can parse this, I would like to see further direct staff to work with the applicant to create further studies and bring the second amendment back to the council, to the commission.
To clarify, could you phrase that in a way that upheld or denied the request to amend the condition rather than tell the applicant to go do something? Because that's not, we'd have to come back with that and it's not very clear.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I move to approve the resolution on both amendments, denying the applicant an amendment. If I can further say that, I would encourage the applicant to go to city council for the first one. And I'd encourage the applicant to come back for the second one to the commission.
Is that acceptable?
Through the chair, Commissioner Blind, I'm afraid you're still, you and I aren't on the same page on this, I'm sorry. There's some confusion. What is it you think that can come back to the? The only way that it can come back to the planning commission is if you do not adopt this resolution and you ask staff to come back with findings and another resolution for you to consider and adopt. And you can give direction, the commission as a whole, the majority can give direction to staff if you want to have them come back with a different resolution that, for example, approves one of the requests and denies the other, or that approves both.
Okay.
You can't change the requests. So the applicant has made two amend, you know, two requests to amend. You can't go further afield than that, that's not before you.
All right, read the amendment, read the request for deny, read that, excuse me, request from the staff and make your motion off of that. And I think you'll better understand how to word it.
Okay. Could you bring that up on the screen for us to all look at?
All right.
I believe it is on the screen now, Commissioner Blind?
Okay, well, I don't see it.
There's nothing on the screen.
Hold on just one minute, we're working on that. Thank you for your patience.
What? It was the, it was up there just a minute ago. The motion, the project description for the motion.
There's a resolution from the planning commission, so look at that, that, I don't know what page. Does anybody have what page that would be in?
It's up on the screen now where the staff recommendation is.
Oh, I see it, okay.
I was looking for the resolution, if you want me to put it in resolution language. That's the recommendation to hold a public hearing, which we're doing.
Section 5 of the staff report?
All right, this, the screen does not have the resolution. It just has the proposal and staff recommendations.
Yeah.
All right, but the wording of the resolution, I believe, would benefit Commissioner Blind?
At least me.
I get my vice chair to read that resolution?
Sure.
Do you see it?
I have it up. I don't know if I need to, if I should read all three pages?
No, 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 just the resolution, just the, the resolution itself, not the whereas's.
Yeah.
Vice Chair, you will find it on, through the chair, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The next to last page, at the bottom of the page three.
I have it, I, okay, I can read the, all right, I can read the whole thing.
Yes.
So, resolution, a resolution denying the request to amend major use permit 20-0008 issued to V-Town Farms, an existing cannabis business within an existing building space in Meadows Plaza, major use permit UP number 20-0008, 5184 Sonoma Boulevard, Suite 300, assessors parcel number 0067-150-300. Whereas on June 7th, 2021, the city council of the city of Vallejo approved the major use permit 20-0008.
You don't need to read all of this.
Okay, that's, I was just making sure, thank you.
Exactly. So based on that, Commissioner Blind, you would do your, make a motion to either accept or approve or deny the resolution and/or if there was some modifications that you needed to do. So you need to word your motion based on what Vice Chair just read. Either resolution to deny the request or a resolution to deny the, or to approve the request with, with conditions. Am I correct to the, to the?
With findings.
Yeah, with findings.
Not with conditions, but with findings, right.
Right. Did you get that?
So there is an option to request a modification to this resolution to be brought back later?
How you would, you would state that, either you would agree to the denial according to this resolution, or you can approve the amendment with conditions that would have to come back. So if you agree to deny it, then it's over. But if you agree to, if you make a motion to approve the request with conditions, then it would have to come back with answers to some of the things, questions that I, that I've taken note that we're very concerned about bringing in that report from the structural engineer as to the viability of all the impediments of putting in that window. Did you understand that?
I did. I'm going to have to think about how I need to word my resolution. I'm having trouble because I have different opinions on these two amendments. And the resolution as stated does not allow me to really parse it the way I want. So I'm going to retract my motion.
All right, so can I get a motion from someone else? Commissioner Bowman?
Yes, I, I move to deny the request to amend conditions of approval for major use permit number 20-0008.
All right, any questions concerning that? If not, then we will, I would entertain a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Commissioner Bowman and Commissioner Palmaris. Can I get a vote?
Commissioner Blind? Commissioner Blind?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
So, so we're, I need to be clear. So we're denying it and then I guess he'll come back on his own accord with a different proposal? Is that what's going on?
No, if you deny the request, it's over.
And the, and the applicant can appeal to the council?
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
So yes?
Oh, wait a minute, we're denying the appeal, is that what I'm saying?
You're right.
Okay, so.
You're denying the request for, to amend the major use permit.
Right, yes.
Through the chair, it's, it's the resolution as stated, is how?
Yes, that's right.
Yes.
The chair is right.
So I'm basically denying this request to, to make changes, right?
That's correct.
So then, yes.
But however, the But however, the, uh, client can make an appeal to the city council.
Right.
Whether or not they accept it, it could come back to us again.
Okay, so then.
So for clarity, you are agreeing to deny, you, you are saying yes to denying the request to amend.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification, Chair.
All right. Uh, Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Palmaris was, uh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowman said yes? Okay, Commissioner Palmaris?
Aye.
Commissioner Mathulik?
Nay.
Vice Chair Stamps?
No.
Chair Cohen Thompson?
No.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Very good, so that simply means that the, um, client can appeal the decision to.